Okay, we're recording.
I think we'll call the May 28th, 2025 meeting of the planning commission to order. Would you please call the roll, Ms. Ramble?
Jay Castile. Jim Jackson.
Here.
Pete Magory.
Here.
David Miller.
Here.
Steve Pajali.
Here.
Connor Whelan.
Here.
Mike Zuloff.
Here. Okay, thank you. The first item on the agenda is approval of the minutes from April 22nd. Everybody had a chance to review those and...
Mr. Chairman, I move approval.
Yes, Mr. Miller, is there a second?
I'll second.
It's been seconded by Mr. Jackson. Any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
I'm going to abstain since I wasn't at the meeting.
Okay, Mr. Magory has abstained. Anyone opposed? Motion passes. Okay, new business. The first item is application for site plan approval, 633 Hancock Street, also known as Booter Drug. Are you going to take that, Ms. Blair?
Yes, sir, thank you.
Okay.
So we received an application by Fox Architectural on behalf of 633 Hancock Street, LLC, for the property, as you mentioned, Booter Drug at 633 Hancock Street. This is for a 4,715 square foot building addition. You can see on the left, the zoning is local business of all the subject parcels, and on the right, the overview aerial at Monroe and Hancock Street. Currently, there's vacant land north of the Booter Drug facility, and that's where they're going to build the addition that they're proposing to. This is the existing eastern elevation of the street view from Hancock Street. So there's a fence there today with the grass behind it. This is the previous building that had been in that location, that elevation from 2019. You can see that on the Google Street View still. And this is the southern elevation from Monroe Street, taken just a couple of weeks ago. So we're at the site plan view now. You can see the existing building down in the bottom right corner of the screen. In red is outlined the proposed addition, and I'll go through the primary components of the proposal. So they are going to relocate their dumpster. You can see that up at the very north of the top of the page here. Add three new parking spaces there, so that would widen that curb cut, and add on to the building, and then update their public parking facility with a couple of new parking spaces. Go through each of those. So this is that area zoomed in where they're north of the addition. They're going to add three parking spaces, and then that same drive aisle will serve as the access to the relocated dumpster. Where the dumpster is today, they're going to strike three parking spaces. They're able to add three spaces to the existing parking lot. There's 21 spaces there today. They're going to add those three north of the building of the employee spaces and three here, so that would have 27 total parking spaces. The building itself, it's split about 2,000 square feet of storage and 2,600 square feet of business use. And this is a diagram of the interior circulation, which is not, you know, that's not typically what we review at the site plan level, but it's just good to see what's going on in the building. They did submit their entire plan set, so there are a lot of details included in the packet online. The elevation here from the eastern, the Hancock Street elevation, this is what the proposed building looks like. We did send some recommendations for them to consider adding additional shutters or architectural elements, or a stripe of color along the building, or something that would align with the historic facade of the Booter Drug company. That is not at all required. It's just some design commentary we tend to give when we see things like this for an opportunity to create a more walkable space and design that aligns with this historic building. But again, that's not required. It's just staff commentary. And this is the southern elevation. They do have a couple of light fixtures proposed. It's all downlit and appropriate light fixtures, so this is what that addition will look like from Monroe Street. And then north on the side of the building where you would have that parking area, it'll look like this. So you won't really see this much unless you're, when you're walking by, you'll be able to turn and see this northern facade of the building. But that's mostly the employee entrance from those three parking spaces. You can see where the existing dumpster was located, and they're going to move it up into that alley. So they're proposing that the trash will get dumped from behind those parking spaces. We thought that looked a little cramped, and we're not sure that it's going to work really well, but they really wanted that location where it is. So we just encourage them to consider the concrete they're putting down, the wear and tear of the heavy trucks going back in there, and to talk to their trash collector to make sure they're going to be able to make that turn to get it all the way back in there to empty the dumpster, or else those three parking spaces are going to be, they won't be usable if the dumpster wants, you know, a wider area to back a truck in there. So the staff analysis includes that. With the addition, the building addition, our code requirements would want 33 parking spaces. They're proposing 23 total, including the existing spaces. The addition is not expected to create additional demand beyond the spaces that they've provided, and this body, planning commission, has the authority to waive those additional parking requirements. So the applicant wasn't concerned, staff was not concerned about the parking discrepancy there. The proposed building addition does meet all other applicable setback area and height requirements of the code, and I already mentioned the dumpster and the design details that we had discussed with the applicant. So overall, staff recommends approval of the proposal with the following conditions: that all applicable permits are obtained through the Building Department, Engineering Department, and any other applicable agency prior to construction, and that they consider design and dumpster comments from staff as part of their final construction, whether they adopt any of those recommendations or not. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Blair. Is there anyone representing this applicant that would like to come up and add anything to Ms. Blair's report, or to, if they had any comments? Come up to the podium and state your name for the record and address?
Good evening, guys. Joshua Fox, architect, 1717 East Perkins Ave, Sandusky. Representing the owner, Booter Drug, in this property. I think Aaron hit most of the key points on everything that we're trying to do. We're trying to make the facility function better for them. I know the dumpster was a big question, and the process with inside of this facility is a processing drug facility, so there's no public access or anything like that. So the goal is, the intent of this project was to tie the warehouse building where they store this product and tie it together so they can take everything inside and outside of the building, instead of going inside and outside, to go within. And then, in addition to that, there will be a new clean room inside this space, so everything's going to be in that side strictly employees, no public coming in that side at all. So the intent of the trash location was, A, we could gain another couple of spaces in the public side, which is on Monroe Street, and by facilitating that dumpster on the other side, there's an existing concrete driveway that's already there, and utilizing some of that space over there for employee/owner parking, you know, just private parking for them, so they can gain a few more spaces. They're comfortable with the spaces that they have, but back to the dumpster, it was the back doors in the top side on the north side, so that allows easy, right out of the clean room, right out the back door, dumpster, whether it's at night or daytime, it's a short distance for them to get travel to the dumpster itself. Other than that, I think Aaron hit most of the other key topics that we're aiming for, and any questions, I'll wait up here.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Jackson?
Yeah, I'm looking at the drawings and everything, but I'm a little bit confused on the lighting of the parking lot from the Monroe Grove Street parking lot.
The existing parking lot on the south side, we have not touched anything on the south side at all. Everything is existing. There's no new lighting added to that side at this time. The three spots are already paved in that area, so we're not doing any new paving in that area either. So I don't have any new lighting on that side. The new lighting that we're doing is on the north side, on the three employee parking spaces. We got wall packs on that side.
I saw that, I was just...
Yeah. Not saying that we haven't, we've never, we never looked into anything on the south parking lot side, so I never really had that opportunity yet for lighting.
Mr. Miller?
My impression for years has been that Booter is kind of unique in this community and for ways around that there are compounding pharmacy, and I think maybe you sort of touched on what I understand, but I'm not sure I'm right. I'm kind of guessing that you'd said that there's no additional employees involved with this, that it's basically production, I assume, for compounding pharmacy? Is that...
Yes, so the owner's actually here if you want to know a little bit more about the process of what's actually going in there, more than I would be able to explain to you. But they currently have existing employees in the facility that do this compounding and so forth. I'm not saying there wouldn't be a couple of additional employees that would have to be in that side, but it would strictly be employees. It would not be a public sales area. The sales area remains where it is today on the Monroe, on the southwest corner of that existing building.
And my point being that it would seem that that would mitigate against the normal proposed or the normal required additional parking based on square footage or something. It's not really going to be additional public shop.
Correct.
Basically, the same employees working in a better facility to better serve the business, right, which I think is a business that is unique to Sandusky and...
Absolutely. Yeah, I mean, I'd be more than happy to bring Matt up. He can explain the process, but absolutely, yeah. It's basically another drug line, if you will, sorry if I say it in wrong terminology, but another process that is in this area that's different than what's in the existing building. So it's a clean room essentially, so it's a new product that's coming out, and it's a new process, and it has to stay contained, HEPA filters, it's like its own little world of life inside this building, inside the building. So, yeah, but it's strictly a process in itself.
And that would also tend to explain why this pharmacy is expanding when other pharmacies in our community are shuttering. It's not the same thing.
Yeah, so Booter Drug is more than just a pharmacy in my mind. They're a compounding company, so they are actually creating drugs, and they got their own patents, and they're a huge company. They have a facility in Perrysburg and Avon as well. But Sandusky is their headquarters. Yeah.
That's really all my questions. Thanks.
Sure. Yep, you're welcome.
Chair. Mr. Zuloff?
Yes, well, I guess I'll start with the dumpsters. Is it safe to say that you wouldn't, certainly you're going to occasionally produce waste that's either toxic or, you know, not safe to just throw in? I imagine that some of your waste is secured indoors and disposed of in other ways than tossed in a dumpster. Is that a safe...
Yeah, this is strictly just the common dumpsters.
So I happen to think that, you know, we've come a long way in handling dumpsters in this town, but I'm still of the opinion that we should secure visually our dumpsters. They should be hidden from view, and we need an ordinance that's enforceable, and we need to enforce it. But actually, I don't mind the dumpster location because it's less visible. I would still suggest that there's some means of screening it. If the dumpster stayed where it was, we'd lose a couple of parking spots if it goes where the architect has proposed, and there's a problem getting the truck in, we lose a couple of spots. So it's sort of a wash, and I think we're all convinced, I'm likely to go with an applicant that says, "We don't really need all that parking," and we are customarily go with the owner. One of the things that might influence me to do that in this case is that on the southeast corner of that intersection, there's a city, I don't know if it's owned by the city, there's a parking lot that goes very much unused, so there's no shortage of parking in the area. There's no conflict with the local residents. So that takes care of dumpsters and parking. I think we have plenty there. The proposed lighting is not compliant with our ordinance, not quite close, but not quite. It's not quite 100% downward. I would prefer that we condition this on making sure that the lighting is, and that's not onerous. It's easy to do. These are just, you know, wall packs, right? So it would be nice, I don't know what else you have on this site. It'd be nice to condition this, I think, on making sure all of it is compliant. We need to put, you know, take every opportunity to make sure that we're a dark sky friendly community.
And these fixtures are, they're compliant with...
I'm sorry?
They are compliant with that, actually. The wall packs on the north side are downward-facing.
The one in the application?
Yeah.
Well, it's downward-facing, but unless I misunderstand the design, it's not perfectly horizontal, and some light will escape above 90 degrees, or above horizontal. I'm not going to quibble over it because it's pretty darn close, but if they're claiming it's dark sky compliant, I'm skeptical.
Yeah, understood, yeah.
But anyway, it's something to look at.
Yeah.
I wouldn't vote against it over that matter because they're pretty close. Where was I? The windows. Are those four windows that illuminate the storage area, is that going to be glass block or...
The windows facing Hancock Street are glass-framed.
Glass-framed.
Non-operable.
Okay. Don't, just...
Yeah, no glass block or anything. We're intending it this time. Be more like a...
They don't operate?
No.
But, okay.
It was more just to get some light into that front area?
Right. So, yeah, you know, we don't, I think it's about time we consider a design review process, architectural board review or something like that, but we don't have that right now, so we can't, I don't think we have any standing to require that. We certainly ought to be considering the appearance. I have no interest in trying to make this addition look like it was part of the original historic, historic. How old is the corner store? How old is that building, do you know?
The original, I think, was 1895. It's an older building at the corner.
Definitely part of our historic legacy and beautifully kept by the applicant. And so, but I think the, our chief planner's comments are, I think, well-taken about, you know, trying to add a little bit of visual interest to that wall of, what's that sided with?
The siding?
Yeah.
It's a metal siding, horizontal siding on the north side.
Horizontal, like shiplab?
No, more of a corrugated kind of metal, modern-style finish, yeah.
Okay, so some texture to it.
Yeah.
Some visual interest.
There's a depth to it, for sure.
But, you know, I suppose a change in color halfway up would be, or partway up would be almost free. I don't know. So well taken, but that isn't going to stop me from voting for it. And so those are my thoughts. In particular, well, I understand the concerns about the dumpster. It's sort of a wash as far as parking. I mean, you're not going to lose anything or gain anything. I think that those three parking spots on the north side of the building probably will be difficult to use if you, certainly on the day that the truck comes.
Thank you, Mr. Zuloff. Any other comments or questions from the table?
Just a question, Mr. Chairman. I'm curious, has a construction contractor been identified yet?
Yeah, the owner has selected a contractor already, yes.
Okay.
Minor construction.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is that it, Mr. Magory?
No further questions.
Okay. Yeah, I just had one question. Is the owner receptive to these design comments with the coloring, I believe it was, that Ms. Blair mentioned?
Yeah, you want to answer?
What's his name?
Hi, Matt Booter, 230 South Gordon Drive, Oak Harbor, Ohio, and 633 Hancock Street. Design, kind of what we wanted to capture, this is pretty high-tech work that we're doing in here. We're doing sterile processing. We do a lot of research and development work. Currently, we have clinical trials going on at Johns Hopkins, Cleveland Clinic, University of Michigan, MD Anderson Cancer Center. So what we wanted to do is kind of take the idea, this is kind of high-tech, brand-new stuff that we're doing here in town. We wanted the new building to kind of look new, high-tech, kind of like you would see where Lilly would put up their type of buildings, but have as the central feature the older Booter Drug building that's always been a drugstore since the 1880s. I think the building was built in like 1870 or something like that. Now, the way it stands right now, we do have plans to want to, again, try to make the facade look like it did back in those days as much as we can, and we'll be coming back to you with those plans as well as we kind of look at some of the old pictures that we can find and see if we can do that. But the idea is kind of old and new. This is the old drugstore, but here's this high-tech, brand-new stuff going on in the background. So the windows, I know there's some question about the windows. We want some windows. If we have too many windows, then we can't use that front area for production. Since we are three facilities in northern Ohio, we do a lot of work across the United States. We do a lot of work with Major League Baseball teams, and so we need larger production machinery in order to make a lot of the things that we do. Same number of people, but we just need to be able to increase our capacity. And so if we have too many windows, then we kind of lose that production space. But we also want people that they're driving by to look in and see some big crazy machine in there making tablets or capsules or creams. So that's kind of why we stuck with just the few windows that we have. So hopefully that the color of the new building that Josh has designed so nicely, which we are going to put some lighting on it, some blue strip lighting so you can offset it, is kind of high-tech, will kind of showcase the old building on the corner. That's kind of what the hope is, is of the aesthetics that we're trying to...
All right. Thank you for sharing that. I was involved when I was out at regional planning. I was the director out there when you had come for some money when you were going through that demolition, and they talked about expansion there then, and I didn't know if it was ever going to happen, so it's nice to see something happen. The dumpster, I don't have a problem with, whatever you want to do with that. The parking, it appears to me that it's kind of staggered. People come, they go. I've gone over there for some compounds for my animals and whatnot, and there's never a problem finding any parking spaces, so. And as far as you're involved with some Major League Baseball teams?
Yeah, yeah. We were called the Proud Compounding Pharmacy of Cleveland Guardians, but we do about half of the Major League Baseball teams provide them that.
Did someone mention to me, I mean, this is kind of revisionist history, but that you were, you put together some sort of hangover compound that the teams were really interested in, and maybe some people around this table that might be interested?
It's on the record, or... Yeah, yeah. We came up with some formulations that kind of help process alcohol quicker.
FDA-approved.
So it's still there, but you'd still have, you wouldn't have the hangover part of it.
Okay. That sounds interesting. Well, I digress. Is there any other comments or discussion from Mr. Magory?
Mr. Booter, are you planning on increasing the number of pharmacists, or are they technicians that do the work that you're expanding?
We have expanded already a little bit. We have, we had, my nephew, my father and I in here, and we have added four other pharmacists.
Okay.
And then we have two sterile processing technicians and some laboratory technicians, and then some support staff, all of our accounting and, I was being, this is the corporate office, this is where all the billing and everything gets done as well. I mean, obviously, we probably would have need maybe for a couple of people down the road, but, I mean, we always want to be able to add, but certainly, as we do that, we know we're going to need to be able to make more parking available, which, of course, across the street and other things would be certainly helpful. So, yeah, we want to be able to grow, most certainly, and I think this kind of helps us.
I was just curious, in the compounding process, is it more technicians or pharmacists that are involved?
It's really both. It's pretty intensive. Our quality assurance, quality control manager is based here in Sandusky, so there's a lot of different type of people, like you would, somewhat like you would find in industry, like the Lillies of the world. In our kind of compounding space, we need those same type of qualified people to do that work. So, yeah, where a lot of retail drugstores might have one or two pharmacists on duty, we'll have four or five on duty at any one time, because it's pretty intensive, coming up with formulations and checking formulations and so forth.
Well, good luck with the project.
Oh, gosh, thank you so much. We're excited to be able to keep our footprint on Hancock Street and help add to the aesthetics of the neighborhood and be here another 140-some years.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity. We appreciate it.
Is there a motion from around the table?
Mr. Chairman, I move approval subject to staff's conditions.
Mr. Miller's moved.
I'll second it. Oh, go ahead.
You can do it.
It's been seconded by Mr. Jackson. Ms. Ramble, would you call the roll, please?
Mike Zuloff?
Yes.
Connor Whelan?
Yes.
Steve Pajali?
Yes.
David Miller?
Yes.
Pete Magory?
Yes.
Jim Jackson?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Thank you so much.
Okay, our next item is 1535 First Street, the RV park at Sunrise Marina. Ms. Blair, are you back up?
I'm back up. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This application was submitted by Hody Enterprises on behalf of Lake Ridge Investments LP for property owns at 1535 First Street, Sandusky, Ohio, for site plan approval for an RV park. So we're talking about a single parcel of, part of the area of Sunrise Marina. It's just behind the building that's the westmost part of this parcel. Here is a look at, you can see in the top view, the Sunrise Marina sign, it's that building there on the left in the top picture that this, the RVs will be located behind. And you can see the view on the bottom photo there. There's currently quite a bit of grade change with the elevations there, and we'll discuss that a little bit. This is what it looks from the southwest and the southeast, that land area currently, and the existing grading between the site and the existing building currently. You can see in the drawing, they're proposing 12 sites for RVs, and these were discussed at length, the use of this in the similar main use discussion we had in December. But they're 12 primarily all-season-long parked vehicles from their customers. They're currently, you can see in the elevations how they're listed. I have a diagonal highlight through them. It's about a 10-foot elevation change, and that's just like a sketch to give us an idea of what you saw in the photos of what that elevation change looks like. So they're going to clear that mostly to make this primarily fairly flat. It will be graded in order to drain properly for the sites. And they're going to take that soil and move it to the east on their property, and they noted in yellow highlight on this map where that will be placed. And the slope of that current grading is about six feet across where, so from, it's about six feet of elevation on that side, and then on the other side, the sharper side, where you can see lots of stripes, it's about 10 feet. So it looks to me, and I gave a little sketch here on the right, that the grading, when they add that soil, won't really affect the look of that overall site grading there, because the slope is sharper closer to the building than, and more gradual on the one side. When they add the soil, it'll just make the other side a little sharper, from what I can tell on the topography drawing. And this was, we were waiting on this, and so if you read in the planning... in the planning commission report, that we were waiting on the grading information, this is what we had been waiting for. So the project received the similar main use approval on December 4th of 2024 for the proposed land use. And they are not proposing any buildings. There's no structures involved with this site plan, so they're not subject to any era, yard, or height requirements. The intent, intent of their zoning district will be observed. There's no buildings, so therefore there's no parking requirements for this expanded use. But there is a lot of accessory parking available on the site provided by the owner and the onsite accessways. So all of the drive entries and everything meet our code requirements. Site illumination appears to comply with the dark sky regulations. Those are just going to be low lights at the kind of balleried, like waist height level at each site because there is electric on these sites. Staff did suggest that they consider planting one canopy tree per RV site to provide shade for outdoor enjoyment. They, they said that they think their customers prefer, prefer the views of the water, but our response is that if, if it's really hot and you're in the blaring sun, you're more likely to go in your RV in the air conditioning than sit outside and enjoy the view of the water. So we still would maintain that planting a tree per RV site is going to make those sites a lot better. And the additional grading questions have been answered. All other planning and zoning requirements would be met. So our recommendation is to approve with a typical condition that all applicable permits are obtained through the building department, engineering department, and any other applicable agency prior to construction. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Blair. Mr. Hart, do you have anything you want to add?
Sure. Todd Hart, Hody Enterprises, 5003 Mile and Road. On behalf of Hody Enterprises, we're very excited to continue the development at Sunrise Marina. You know, a premier marine facility, rezoned, I think, back in December, as Aaron mentioned, for recreational use. The intent here is to bring this facility into the marina. So currently, that space there is an area that contained dredged materials with the intent to put, as Aaron mentioned, year-round campers there, many of which are going to be boaters and/or the families of the boaters at the facility. On the back and forth with the, the grading, one item, just to maybe clarify, and this was in the back and forth with our engineer, which is Kleinfelder, quantity-wise, they're actually projecting about just under 4,000 cubic yards of material. So what you're seeing on that plan page that you had up there on the east side is about 4,000 cubic yards of topsoil, which we would silt fence and stabilize as required by Ohio EPA. So that would be submitted as a part of our SWIP plan to Erie County and to the EPA. We're developing more than an acre, obviously, so we're going to have to go through the EPA on that. Questions?
Any questions for Mr. Hart? I'll take Mr. Jackson and then Mr. Miller.
Okay, I noticed down the road, about maybe a half a mile, there's another RV, RV park there. And on that RV park, they've got mounds, so it's obscured a little bit from First Street. Now, this was going to be behind a building.
Correct.
So it's going to be almost, will you be able to see this one from First Street?
Hmm, probably not.
Probably not. Okay. All right. And, and your main purpose was to, for people that have boats and RVs, that they could pull their RVs in and maybe at night times utilize their RV to sleep in?
Yeah, it's actually seasonal versus transient. So it's, meaning they're going to have the site for the year versus people that would, like a lot of traditional campgrounds, you have a mixture of seasonal and transient campers. This is all seasonal, meaning they're going to rent the space, they're going to be there year-round, and primarily to serve our boaters. Again, we have Venetian Marina, we have Sunrise Marina, we have Crossview Marine Services. Between those facilities, you know, we have close to 1,000 boaters and many of which have either campers or families with campers. So that, that, and again, it's only 12 sites. So primarily, we're looking to serve our boating community.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Mr. Miller?
Yes, I was just interested in the owner's view of the tree discussion. And I'm not really aware of where the city would like to see the trees, but in, in RV park situations, it seems like trees could be potentially problematic as they grow up. And these things are big boxes that get maneuvered in and out and, and sometimes not the way that you would exactly expect is optimum as you're trying to hit, hit that spot. I, I don't know. What, what is your reaction?
Well, I, I thank you for thinking very practically because that's the case. Again, a lot of times when we look at landscape plans, they have a perfect-sized tree, and then you plant, you know, an eight-foot tree, and in five years, you have problems like what you're explaining. In campgrounds, a lot of times, the trees become firewood. People, you know, they'll cut out branches or they'll get kindling. That's what they'll use the trees for. But I think here, the primary thing that we tried to communicate back to the city, and it's interesting because I think at one point, Aaron, it might have been yourself, but we had a meeting with the city regarding the building that we were building at Venetian Marina. And the request from the city was, hey, can you leave the end of the building open? Why? Because, so people can see the water. That's what people are coming down there for. And that's really the intent of, you know, us not wanting to put trees there. When those trees grow up, they're going to block the view, and it might be blocking the view of the, all the back sites. But, you know, between the trees overgrowing or us having to manage the trees and blocking views for campers, we don't think that's, you know, the best fit for the campers.
Mr. Chairman? I'd like to add to that.
Yeah.
I'm an RV-er, so I know another problem when you have trees. Most high-end RVs have satellite tracking systems in them for watching TV.
Sure.
And I, I know that I've had a problem by different RV parks that when I would get too many trees, it would knock out my, knock out my satellite system.
Okay. The other thing is, is they have a swimming pool right there. So one of the things that wasn't on there is an aerial, no building, because what we're using for these 12 sites is the existing bathhouse and the existing community room and swimming pool. So the less trees around that swimming pool area, the better for us to be able to maintain that.
Mr. Zuloff? Questions? No? Mr. Whalen?
I'm good.
I, I just have a, a question on, how, how is the RV park business? You know, I see yours and the one out on 250, and they, they always look busy.
Yes.
I just wonder, is business pretty good?
The industry is strong right now.
Yeah?
Yeah. And I actually, we've been talking to contractors, obviously, on this project. The Port Clinton market's very strong, very heavy in the RV market. Right now, it's, you know, I think post-COVID, a lot of people want to get outdoors, they want to get away and be in the great outdoors.
Yeah. And, and the, the sites that are year-round, do you get people that stay in the winter?
So we do not, in our facilities, we do not do year-round camping.
Oh, okay.
The RV park in, across from the Kalahari, they are the only campground in the area that are doing year-round campers. And they, they have some year-round campers.
And, but you did mention these would be year-round?
No, they'll be seasonal.
Okay.
So, which basically, you know, March to November for us, not year-round campers. Yeah. It creates, year-round camping in northern Ohio creates a whole set of issues as soon as that water comes above ground, so.
Anybody else from around the table? If not, is there a motion?
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman. Subject to the condition recommended by the staff in the report.
It's been moved, is there, by Mr. Zuloff? Is there a second?
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded?
Discussion.
Yes, Mr.?
So is this, the motion is conditioned on the rec, the staff recommendations for the construction, but what about the tree?
Was that a recommendation or a suggestion?
It was a suggestion inside.
No, the motion, Mr. Chairman, to clarify the motion, which I made, was one condition, the all applicable, all applicable permits are obtained through the building department, engineering department, and any other applicable agency prior to construction as recommended in the staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Zuloff. Does that answer your question, Mr. McGory?
Thank you.
Please take the roll, Ms. Ramble.
Jim Jackson?
Yes.
Connor Whalen?
Yes.
Mike Zuloff?
Yes.
Pete McGory?
Yes.
Steve Pajali?
Yes.
David Miller?
Yes.
All right, motion passes.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
All right, we have, our next item is to adjourn, but are there any updates? I know Mr. Zuloff always waits for updates.
I had to not prepare any additional updates today. Adam will be back for the next meeting, so I'll have a little more bandwidth. But Columbus Avenue, as you see, is open to traffic. The lighting is coming soon.
Do we, are we expecting to not cancel the design or the Bayfront Corridor Committee meeting? Will, will we be holding a meeting?
There is an agenda prepared for Bayfront Corridor. I believe we will be holding a meeting unless we hear otherwise.
I would encourage anyone interested to show up for that meeting because it's 7:30 in the morning. It shouldn't interfere with your day too much.
You get it out of the way.
Also, there was, there was, oh, oh, for the good of the order, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I don't know. Is it planning? If, if you missed the, the pool open house last night, there's still goings-on at the school that, you might get a peek at the pool, too. They, there's art shows, student art shows, six to eight tonight, and then two, let's see, I'm sorry, five, five to seven tonight in the gallery. So, you know, anyway, student, we should all care about student art.
Yeah.
At, at the, at the high school.
Thank you, Mr. Zuloff. Is there a motion to adjourn?
One, one further question.
Yes, Mr. McGory.
Is the Battery Park project still a work in progress or, okay, good. Glad to hear that. I'll move to adjourn.
It's been moved. Is there a second? Mr. Miller? Thank you. We stand adjourned.